You okay?
Yes. Okay, so now we'll go ahead and follow the meeting to order and we will start with the election of a moderator. Make nominations from the floor. Thank you. Any other nominations? There are none, we'll go ahead and close the nomination. Take a vote. So, listen, fair.
Hi.
You opposed? Okay, so this is our town meeting. It's eligibility to vote as any person who's an elector of such town and any citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more, who go out here severaly, who was liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of such a town. I think it's general statute, section seven, there are six. Read the notice.
Special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin, held at the Berlin Town Hall Council Chambers, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Tuesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty one, at six forty five P M. For the following purposes. One, to approve an F Y twenty-two non-budget appropriation of two million, two hundred thousand from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the transfer of other funds, both in the general fund to fund the purchase of two new fire vehicles and the balance owed on the third new fire vehicle to be delivered in early twenty twenty-two in Berlin, Connecticut, this twenty-third day of November, twenty twenty-one, town clerk's office.
Thank you. So, there's a resolution to come before the town meeting.
Do you have them? Yes.
Okay. It just read, but we have today, the special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meeting, in the town of Berlin, to be held at the Berlin Town Hall.
No, you just read the motion. Yeah, just read that.
This thing right here, okay? Okay, so I'll start again. I move to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two non-budget appropriation of the two million, two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the transfers to other funds, which are both in the general fund, fund the purchase of two new fire vehicles. The balance owed on the third new fire vehicle to be delivered in early two thousand and twenty-two. Okay, thank you. Will you second on that?
I second.
So, now we have discussions, town meeting, obviously, so we have discussion on that resolution. So, what we're doing, folks, just to explain a little bit more, is we have been replacing our fire trucks. I think we've replaced three so far. Yeah? Yeah, fine. Yeah, come on up and explain it. You can explain it better than I. And why we're doing this, to save the town some money. Prices are going up, of course, like every, everyone, right?
Prices are going up on everything, yeah, and commodities are hard to find.
Yeah.
So, the fleet of fire vehicles in the town of Berlin, there is eleven main pieces of fire vehicles. That'll be down to ten pieces of fire vehicles when the new truck comes in, in February, March, we get rid of two of them. The problem is, is that, or not the problem, but the situation is, is that the fleet is aging. We have four, I like, identical pieces of apparatus that were purchased in two thousand and two, which are now twenty years old and showing their ages. These pieces of apparatus are our main backbone department and our main pieces of equipment coming out of the four stations. We are looking to purchase two vehicles before January one. And in doing that, there'll be two alike vehicles. So, they'll be meeting not only our strategic plan moving forward of replacing the vehicles on a timely fashion, but replacing the vehicles with a like vehicle, so that training and components that to repair these vehicles and maintain them are all like. So, we're looking to purchase two vehicles for January one. And the reason why we're pushing it before January one is because there is dooming, like everywhere, inflation. Manufacturer has told us that we will be anywhere from seven to twelve percent increase. So, on a nine hundred thousand dollar truck, we'll just take ten percent, break it in the middle, we're at ninety thousand dollars. One of the manufacturers today posted that their increase was going to be twelve percent, sorry. So, when we look at these two vehicles and we look at them at that, they're going to be nine hundred thousand dollars base, we're looking at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I also was on the phone today with the manufacturer and the sales rep, and we were able to get some concessions because we're buying two alike vehicles at the same time. So, we're looking, and we haven't got the figures in my hands yet, I'm meeting again with them tomorrow, but we're looking at another thirty thousand dollars, we're going to say. So, we just take, we just take the ten thousand, the ten percent and ninety, that's a hundred and eighty thousand, and then put thirty on top of it, we're going to save two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And you can say, well, we would save two million if we didn't do this. Well, now you would save two million today, but you're going to have to replace them at some time. So, why don't we do our diligence? Let's move this forward and assist the fire department in meeting their strategic plans and the taxpayers in the approval.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. Yeah, we noted a few years ago, the fleet was in need of replacement vehicles, several of them. Started that, and this is a continuation of that, and which is, which is a good thing. And obviously, we could save some money, we're going to buy these anyway, down the road in the next two to three years, so. That's the thinking behind this. So, certainly, you know, public safety is most important, right? Number one on our list. So, that's, that's why we're here. So, any other comments from anyone, the public town meeting? So, anyone say anything about this, this topic?
With the two that will be leaving in February, there is a little trade on one of them. Unfortunately, with the four that were purchased in two thousand and two, the manufacturer went out of business in two thousand and eight. Parts are now hard to find. Yes, we can find the components such as the engine and the transmission and those components that are general, like Detroit Diesel, the Allison's, or, or, you know, any of those components. But the little components that are in the cap, the switching and door handles and things like that, the plastic inside there, we can't find anymore. So, when we had a, somebody come in and he gave us an estimate on what, what the vehicles were, he looked at the one that, one of the ones that's going in February, and he says, that I'll give you money for. Those four, I don't want to know anything about. So, and, and usually, when the apparatus gets, is done with its service, it's usually, it's, you know, it's peanuts. They're used up. And when I say used up, twenty years, the problem with, one of the concerns with it is N F B A, National Fire Protection Association. They make standards out there, and a lot of people follow those standards. So, those standards, if you live in an N F B A state like Massachusetts, they have to stay, follow those standards. Connecticut's an OSHA standard, so OSHA looks back at those standards. But with those standards, a frontline piece apparatus is zero to fifteen years. Fifteen to twenty years is a reserve apparatus. After twenty years, it's junk, not serviceable. So, when we start looking at these apparatus that are twenty years out, you're not going to get a city to come in or another, I won't say wealthy town, but another town that, that's frugal minded and looking out to purchase apparatus and purchase used apparatus, they don't want to pick up a twenty-year apparatus. They want to pick up a fifteen-year, a twelve-year-old apparatus, which shows them that they have by eight more years of service in it. So, unfortunately, the, the four that were purchased in two thousand and two, you're not going to see a lot of money.
And, and I suppose the one which is going now, right, that's quite on fire?
Oh, no, that, we had, we had one, that was a number of years ago, that caught on fire. We repaired that truck, put it back in service. It is not, it has now been replaced and is actually out of the country.
Oh, yeah.
It's out of the country, it's down in the southern end of Mexico. Hopefully, having a nice service out there.
Well, warmer weather for it, anyway.
There you go.
So, that's what happens with that old one, that's caught on fire on the way back from the fire, right?
On the way back from the fire, on a fire, on or above lower lane and north road.
That's how old our fleet was.
Right. Well, our current age of our fleet, or average age of our apparatus, we can figure out all the years, it comes out to two thousand and seven point five. So, when we replace these two apparatus along with the one coming in February, we will be up to two thousand and fifteen, with the average age of fleet.
Yeah, we're good, doing pretty well.
We're doing pretty well.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Not questions, welcome to questions, comments, whatever. If not, we'll go ahead and so, what we do now, we'll end the discussion and we'll just vote on that. So, we vote on the resolution, and then that, for the council, will whatever we vote to approve or not approve it on our agenda, but the town meeting, anyone in attendance that's eligible to vote, will vote on this resolution, to send it to the town council while we're here. So, we'll go ahead and take a vote, all is in favor of saying the resolution, now that was read before, the budgeted two million. We transferred other funds, purchased two new fire vehicles and the balance owed on the third year, delivered by early twenty twenty-two. All is in favor of that? Say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, so, motion the resolution carries, and that'll, that will end our public meeting, so the public meeting is adjourned, and we'll take a couple of minutes, and then we'll go into our townhouse.
No, they haven't started. Are we getting close, if I? You say yes or no?
My brain needs to.
Okay. Okay, so, here.
If everyone who's on the Zoom meeting can please silence themselves, put themselves on mute.
Okay, just don't leave it around.
Okay, well, you go ahead now, and I know we're too misplaced, he doesn't like that. Seven o'clock ago, follow our council meeting's order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the mother of this country. Council of Sisino.
Yeah.
Mayor Kuzinski.
Yeah.
Council Luddy.
Yeah.
Council Pianessa. Council Russell. Council Yonaga. Council Vich. Mayor, you have form.
Now, we have our regular audience of citizens as opposed to the one at the former town meeting. So, whatever you want, the town council, on anything on the agenda tonight, we do have two public hearings coming up as well, one on the ordinance for the animal control ordinance, and the second one is the.
On the handicap?
Yes.
So.
Finance work.
So, people.
Public hearings, which will be public.
Yes, comment at that time.
Comment on those. Later. So, I would appreciate you probably save those comments for those public hearings on those two issues. But if there's anything else on the agenda, or anything else that is bothering you, that you want, or, or not bothering you, that you want to talk, talk to the council about, we are happy to hear it at this time. Or anybody on Zoom as well. Okay, going once, and we, one. Three times, okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens, and we'll go on to our meeting agenda. We start with our consent agenda. Here is. We haven't met for a while, so there's a lot on this agenda. So, we have a refund, golf course, golf course, another pro rated credit, approved request for the Berlin Police Association to have field usage and light fees, that is, these hundred dollar place, or football game. Police field on November twenty-first, which already occurred, approved the request for our own, helping Berlin Foundation to waive the cost of two police officers estimated five sixty-nine, having a tire problem, football game. November twenty-third, accept donations to the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account. And then, number six is donations totaling two thousand dollars to the Berlin Pickle Memorial Library to be deposited in separate accounts. Approve the donation from the Manzi Foundation, purchase two automated external simulator, simulator's value at four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars for use in the fire department, and waive the fees associated with hiring two police officers, cover the Berlin Tree Light at this weekend, and accept the donation of three hundred and twenty-five dollars, appropriate the funds to the supplies expenditure account for the police department. So, those are the nine items on our consent agenda. Counselors, any comments or questions before we take a motion? There are none, go ahead and take a motion on our consent agenda.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I think the motion except the items of the consent agenda.
Thank you, second. Any other comments or questions, counselors? There are none, all is in favor? Aye. Close? All right, motion carries, thank you. So, now that brings us to our first public hearing. Lots of paper tonight here. So, I'm going to go ahead and call our first public meeting to order. And the purpose of the. Yes, yeah, you do, this purpose of this public hearing, first.
Yeah, the first one, I had to do the, do the lease ordinance that you recommended to the ordinance committee, and they reviewed it, and they sent me to the council, and we scheduled this public hearing, giving thirty days for to think about it, because publicly posted, so that people could review it and be prepared to make any comments. And once we have all the comments back from the public, we will wrap the language and bring it back at the next meeting, for your consideration.
Okay, thanks, Roche. So, yeah, this, this came from the ordinance committee, we've been working on this for a while, and so, purpose tonight, of course, is to have this public hearing, make public comments on this. And then, at the next council meeting, you can vote on it. So, many of you, it seems, the audience, and several of the, well, a lot of them, it's been a lot of meetings on this particular issue, so we basically made a decision on this, to send it forward. There were a lot of language changes, a lot of different information here, the, probably one of the most significant parts of it, I guess, while we're, we're changing some of the language, certainly in the town, because we have had in, in the town and in neighborhoods, we've had some serious dog bites, issues with dogs wandering from one yard to the next, and some wandering out of the yard, out to public property, like a sidewalk. So, we've changed it to, they're going to have to be on a lead, anywhere in town on public property, that's parks and everywhere else. The only area that we carved out for, I think it was a period of six months, to study it a little bit further and make a final decision, was, was the area in Bicentennial Park, which is typically been, although should be on a leash, but we have a lot of off-leash area there in the meadow, but we're still examining that, looking for perhaps a different location that would be a little bit more suitable for a park like that. We've taken lots of testimonies. We've got a lot of different towns that have different dog parks, fence, not fence, or, or bigger fenced areas, or somewhere on fence, depending on the town, some downstate have some big areas that I think that we were not fence, but we kind of looked at all the information, we're still going to do that, we're still looking at some different locations in Berlin for that, to do that, and that's the period that, once we pass this, it'll be six months from from that day that passes, in the next council meeting in December, where we're going to obviously continue to investigate that, and then hopefully we'll make decisions before that six-month period is, is up. So, online, you can see the whole ordinance and see what's in it. So, that's, although, again, we discussed this for quite a while now, but a couple of years, probably, so. Now would be the time for public comments. If there's any public comments, feel free to step up to the mic, your name and address. Yes, sir. Hi. All right. Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, everyone, my name is Carl Lewis, good evening. I'm at fifty-six Hartland Terrace, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you about this issue. My intent is not to speak for or against necessarily the concept of a leash ordinance. I have a whole lot of smart people have and will talk about that, have been talking about it, Mr. Mayor, as you said, for a number of years before this, and will continue to talk about this, both for and against. Rather, I'm here to speak specifically about the current temporary and stopgap proposal, which specifically exempts and treats differently bicentennial park. This is a bad idea, respectfully, and one that I believe should be rejected. Here's why. First, the proposal disproportionately impacts the residents of Winesap Road. There's already a lot of activity of this type for this purpose, and there are also people who run their dogs, frankly, Pistol Creek, Sage Park, and others of our beautiful open space parcel. It is not unreasonable to envision that the law-abiding citizens who, who go to the other areas would be funneled to the Winesap Road area, an area, as I said, that gets a lot of, a lot of this activity as a result of this proposal. So, I believe it's disproportionately impacting Winesap Road folks. Second, the proposal does not address the issue of out-of-control dogs at or outside the meadow area. Okay, I was there on Sunday, I'm a former dog owner, love dogs, and they're out-of-control dogs in the meadow area and outside the meadow area all the time. It's just a fact of life here at Berlin. A third, it is, and quite respectively, respectfully, a loosely, not to say cruelly worded proposal, a proposal that specifically includes community playground, the Morde, then the Bitner Pool, the Grove, Hatchery, Rock Hiking Trails, Heffernan Park, Kensington Orchard's, Landation Mountain Space, Little People's Playground, Meeting House, the Couchy Memorial Pool, Murray Heights Paper Goods Pond, Petting Complex, Pistol Creek, both sides of the street, Potter's Field, Ragged Mountain Hiking Trails, Senior Center, Timberland Golf Course, Town Hall Complex, Veterans Park, Volunteer Park, and Webster Park, I don't even know where that is. Respectfully, does a fairly poor job at defining what the meadow area is in Bicentennial Park. I have lived in this town and been hiking at Bicentennial Park for probably longer than it's been legal to do so, and I can tell you that there's several meadows there, including a beautiful new beaver meadow that's been, that's evolved over the last three or four years. I don't know what the meadow area means. The next reason that it's a bad idea, it does not comport with the latest plan of conservation and development, which envisions passive recreational opportunities across contiguous parcels of open space, and this time, we've done a wonderful job in creating these open space parcels and connecting them. For example, there's a fifty-mile loop that is called the Hatchery Loop. It's part of the Mediacomment Trail, it includes the Mediacomment Trail. It specifically runs right at the end, right near the end of Winesap Road. And reserving the spaces at the fact of dog park eating temporarily would be not in line with what I believe is the vision of the plan of conservation and development. And finally, this proposal is inconsistent with the original intent of the park, which was supposed to be an inclusive one. If anyone here recalls the discussion that happened, and I do, because I was living in town all of a sudden, I was nine years old at the time, is, is a bicentennial park was supposed to be welcoming to all, and to quote Berlin's mayor at the time, "It was like insurance, your kids and my kids will have a place to go in the future," he said, quote, "whenever, wherever we have is open to everyone." So, I would just respectfully suggest that the council, and this is very respectfully suggested, the council, instead of making this six-month stopgap measure, step back, not pass a six-month ordinance, and get to the, and get to the business of finding an appropriate place for this to comport with the plan of conservation development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any, what else from the public?
Here, I'm Pat Leir, two-two-one, Still Meadow Lane. First, I want to thank Mr. Lewis for your words. When I think about Bicentennial Park and the plan of conservation for our lands here in Berlin, I know that the intent is not a dog park for that part of the town, and it has caused people not to go there, because there's dogs running, and, you know, it can be very intimidating to some. It also is a hardship for the homeowners on that part of Winesap Road. The thing, as a nurse, having bitten not once but twice by a dog, and also caring for people who have had dog bites, it, it, it's a serious thing, and as the mayor said momentarily ago. And as the mayor said momentarily ago, the town has had and suffered some of our citizens or visitors to our town, serious dog bites. So for me, I really have to think about public safety. As a nurse, safety is one of our most important values. And as actually the mayor said previously during the talk about the fire. He said, and I quote, "Public safety is high on our list." So this particular ordinance that you want to put forth puts aside the majority and panders to the view. If we really took public safety high on our list, we would enact a leash law that covers every public area within our town. And we would not go by and let people, the minority, take over a public park and prevent other people from utilizing it. It is just wrong, and we should do our job, and we should keep the people of Berlin safe.
Okay, anyone else?
My name's Patricia Padag. I live on Winesap Road. And probably know me, I've been to these meetings for probably the past ten to fifteen years, arguing for a leash law in Bicentennial Park. I have two instances I'd like to share with the council that happened to me personally in the past three weeks. I went into the park myself, walked to the end of the park, walked back on my phone, and was approached by two dogs running to me. I put my camera on and I have video, anybody in the council would like to see it, of two dogs running up to me. I'm thankful that I didn't have my dog leashed with me because in the video, I'm circling, trying to get the dogs away from me. I'm not afraid of dogs, so, and they weren't vicious dogs at all. But in the backgrounds, probably a hundred feet behind the dogs, you can hear the gentleman that owned the dogs telling them to get away from them. Okay, so that was the first instance. About a week and a half or two weeks ago, I was walking my dog down to the end of the cul-de-sac. There was a truck there with two pit bulls outside the truck, sitting there, no owner nearby at all. There was another woman in her car who yelled out her window to me, "Do you know these dogs?" I said, "No, I don't." She goes, "I can't let my dog out of the car because I don't know them either." I told her, "Call," I said, "maybe the owner is hurt." And the dogs came back to their, to their truck. I said, "Call the police department. Maybe they're hurt. Maybe somebody's hurt." She called the dog warden. She yelled out the window. The dog warden didn't answer the phone. I said, "Call the police." In the meantime, I took my dog to one of the neighbors because I was fearful if those dogs approached my dog, we may have a problem. Of course, nobody was home. A woman called the police department, and the police department told her, "Call the dog warden." In the meantime, another woman came down who apparently knew the owner of the dogs and said, "I know the, I know the dogs." Ten minutes later, I hear the owner in the field calling his dogs. The dogs turned around and ran to him. But this was a possible tragedy that could have happened, had those pit bulls came after my dog and myself. And this is one of the reasons. There's numerous instances, and I know there's good dog owners, and I know there's responsible dog owners that go out there, but there are many that are not. And that's the problem. I see, I'm down there a lot. I don't go into the field because I can't let my dog be subjected to loose dogs in the field. I'm fearful for what can happen down there. I'm thankful that when I was out in the field and those two dogs didn't come, that I didn't have my three-year-old neighbor with me who's terrified of dogs. I can't, I know myself, I can't go out there and sit and have a picnic. And it's passive recreation. I should be able to, and anybody should be able to go out there. And I'm sorry that we can't have dogs unleashed running through how many acres of meadow there are. I just, I just hope you would reconsider this ordinance. This is going on for far too long. Mr. Russell, the last meeting I heard you on video, not thinking this was a great idea. I hope you always think of you.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Jake Anthony. I live next to Patty on Winesap Road. I'm gonna echo what Carl said tonight, which is, my biggest concern with this ordinance is the six-month extension for Bicentennial. I think that you should just not vote on this and put it off until, sort of leave everything status quo and put it off until you've decided exactly what you want to do. And the reason I say that is, my fear is that six months go by and you don't have an idea of what you're going to do, respectfully, because it's just a complicated issue, and you're gonna punch it off another six months, and then another six months. In the meantime, we become the only thing in town. I've been in this neighborhood for eighteen years, and we've had traffic, and we've had all these issues that we bring up, and we've dealt with it. We've been told to deal with it. But now we're being told that you're gonna be the only thing in town, and now you're gonna have more traffic, more dogs down there, more issues. And I feel like that's unfair to us when this public property is the same as any other public property in town. And it should be treated the same way. So I would ask that you put this off for an indefinite amount of time until you've decided exactly what you want to do. I just think it could be six months, it could be a year, it could be two years when we're the only thing in town. So respectfully, I would hope that you show this for a little while and figure out exactly what you want to do. So thank you for your time.
What else?
Mary Catherine LaRose, twenty-six, Woodruff Lane, Kensington. I just wanted to address a few things that came up in some of the other points that speakers made tonight. One is about inclusiveness. People who walk their dogs in a bicentennial field, mainly in the field because that's where most of us stay. We're not trying to exclude anyone. It's really the people who don't want any off-leash areas at all that are trying to exclude us. And the other thing, Carl mentioned the passive use of town lands in the, in the plan of conservation and development. And I did bring this up at the last conservation meeting that in, I have found nothing in the plan of conservation development that would say that walking your dog on or off the leash is anything but passive use of town land. I might suggest, if you want to change the language a little bit to the open field versus a meadow. The big field, when you first come from the cul-de-sac Bicentennial and you walk in, it's, there's a narrow part at first. There's a break-off to the left. There's some paths that go off to the right in the woods. But the main open field is what mainly the people who walk their dogs off-leash use. So if you changed it from meadow to field, I think that would be a little clearer for people. The other thing about the six months that was mentioned, it does mention in the wording of the document I have from October, and I don't know what's changing on that, but it says six months more or less, according to, at the discretion of the town council. So people that are concerned on Winesap and think that they're gonna get more traffic at Bicentennial could do a wait-and-see. I've been there recently several times, and I've actually, it's funny, I don't know if I'm just going at off-times, but I've found less traffic. I haven't gone, I will say, I haven't gone on like a Sunday afternoon or Saturday afternoon. But I've only found like two or three cars where I used to find six or seven cars in the, in the cul-de-sac. So maybe do a wait-and-see on that. And again, if it becomes an issue, then of course you come back to the council and say, you know, this has gotten really way too busy because people are leaving Pistol Creek and they're coming here, or, you know, whatever people are doing. Another point, constantly, people that are against the off-leash area want to call it a dog park. They say we want a dog park, we want a designated dog park. We do not want a designated dog park. We simply want an open space where we can walk our dogs, play with the other dogs off-leash. So if we could just please change the language, do not use the word dog park because it's just not what people are looking for. The other thing, when you're talking about dog bites, I understand from the mayor and the council that the main concern is in the neighborhoods. Dogs coming out of their own property and coming out and either attacking another dog or a person. I'd like to know, it's, again, we go way back, years back, and we brought this up. Where are the police reports that talk about dog bites at Bicentennial? Where are the police reports? Because if someone was bitten at Bicentennial, there should be police report. And we asked for them, never see them. So the point that was made about, you know, open space should be for the majority, not for the few. I completely agree with that. But when you look at how many pieces of open space our town has, you just look at that listing. I know some of them are ball fields and some of them are small little parks. But you look at those big open pieces of land that the town has managed to put together over the course of the last ten, fifteen years. We're only looking for one. And everywhere else, we're gonna walk our dogs on a leash, so we're just looking for one. And I don't understand why then we become the few, not, not, we are the few. And we're just looking for one little space. And the majority of land in this town is being really underutilized in a sense that, you know, you have a few hikers here or there, but you don't. That one bicentennial field is very popular for the reason that it is the one place that we can go with our pups and enjoy each other, the dogs enjoying each other. And I'm very sorry to hear that there are a couple of people using that park and they're not being responsible. Enforcement, of course, and rules have to be followed. Walking your dog into Bicentennial all the way, I go all the way to that wooden board that somebody's tacked up some poopy bags. Walk in there, go all the way in there, then take your dog off-leash. Look around, who's there? What other animals are there? Not just letting your dog loose from the car. It's so inconsiderate. I never do that. Most of the people I know that are dog people don't do that either. So again, if, if there's an enforcement issue, then you call the police and you say, you know, those dogs were just sitting by their car and that guy was who knows where he was. So I do, you know, I'm sorry for people that do that, but that's not us. That's one person, and, you know, I hate when that's the only example that comes out. When, when I go there, you know, I have a blast with the dogs and the other dogs that are there and have never had a problem. So those are the points that I wanted to bring up tonight.
Yes, sure. Two documents here I would like to enter into the public document. The first one was dated July twenty-seventh. You don't have a copy of it now, but it was given to you from the Parks and Rec Commission. And there are two points made there to summarize it. One, first one says that the Parks and Rec Commission strongly suggests that the ordinance be modified to prohibit any animals on town-owned athletic facilities and fields. That's one. The second one, it says that you consider different locations for a dog park. I already take you back. It's written dog park, it's the off-leash area. You offer the following points for your consideration of the Pistol Creek site, that's a site that we talked about. So I will enter this into the public discussion in a minute. The second one is from the Conservation Commission. At its regular meeting, you have a copy of this with you. At its regular meeting on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Berlin Conservation Commission and Animal Reserve is all to oppose any leash ordinance that excludes any portion of any town open space land. So I'll enter both those into the record. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. John Bowe, eighty-five St. Paul Drive, Berlin. I'm here representing the Parks and Rec Commission. So as Roche said, the July twenty-seventh memo that drafted and sent on for you to consider for the, the ordinance that you're looking at tonight, the amendments. With that, though, we've taken a look at the amendments, and there's a couple of changes that need to be done if you're to pass them. So I wanted to point those out. If you start at the back end, it's chapter sixteen, Parks and Rec and Open Spaces, section thirteen dash thirty-two, dogs. The first sentence says, "Dogs are not allowed on playing fields, playgrounds, golf courses, traps, or outdoor courts," period. What we need, what we, well, what we ask you to add to that is scratch bar. So it reads, "Traps, comma, outdoor courts, comma, inside the fenced-in area at the pools and within the first fence of Skelis Field." So we would not, we strongly recommend that you not allow dogs inside the fenced areas of our pools, town pools, as well as within Skelis Field. I think that when this was drafted, you know, the lawyer doesn't know all the fields. We actually had to go through everyone ourselves. But if you know Skelis, mainly the football field, crossfield at Sage Park, we have a main gate, people come into the main gate, and then there's another fence to prevent people from going onto the playing field. There was a circumstance, even this past football season, where someone brought a leash dog into the first fence. We don't believe that's appropriate. There's tremendous number of traffic areas and things like that. So we think that has to be specified where dogs are not allowed. Okay? If you carry that forward, then when you look at your at-large definition, you'd want to include that same wording, where it talks about accepting, you know, at-large allows dogs on a leash of seven feet, except playing fields, playground, blah, blah, blah. Again, add in inside fenced-in areas of pools and within the first fence of Skelis Field. Arroge, I think we provided the wording, and if not, I can give you a copy of this so that you have it. Then the second, or, yeah, that's, that's the main change. The second point that we want to make is designated public property. Means public property in which animals can be on a leash or a lead that is ten feet in length. You guys can figure out whether seven foot or ten foot is the right one. But then we go and we list, you know, part of the memo, meadow. And it lists out all our playgrounds, all our complexes, pools, and things like that. We, we don't like lists only because we could forget, and by the way, we did. So you'll see Bitner Junior, you need to put Memorial Pool, again, that's the official name. Percival Pool needs to be added. And then included in this list, and I guess this is where, you know, you can, you can take a dog on a ten-foot leash, I think, or seven foot. It says, "Petting Complex." We're not sure why petting's included, but Sage Park is not included in this list. So Sage Park, you come into Sage Park, you have a big area, right? People take dogs on a leash to the pond that's in the back. We had a big discussion whether or not, you know, that should be allowed the way the softball fields are configured. But we all agreed we should allow it, and as long as they're on a leash. And of course, they can't go in the playing fields. So, you know, either take our petting complex or we need to make sure we're including all places like Sage Park. Okay? So those are the changes that we'll look for the amendments that you're considering tonight. And, and again, we thank you for taking the step to require leashes because we've had instances where they've been on playing fields, been on tracks. The town has spent significant amount of money, and quite frankly, it ruins it. And I think for the most part, people do agree that we need a leash law. And so we'd like to see you excluding dogs running loose on the playgrounds and parks. Thanks. loose on the playgrounds and parks. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Right Star, fifty-nine Hudson Street. For transparency, I'm also in the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm speaking as a citizen. Um, I, and I spend a lot of time on the fields, soccer, and I'm always over there a lot. And I can tell you of many instances where dogs are free. All right, running around, whether it's on off-leash around the pond, whether they're on, go there at noontime, there's a woman that has her dog out there, it's very nice and cheap. Does stuff with every place, my dog, my, my wife walks our dog, uh, little eighteen-pound poodle, and has been charged on by unleashed dogs around Berlin High School, two big German Shepherds. Picks a dog up scared. Um, yours truly was over at Sage Park, uh, the day after we had a training session. And, uh, I went there just to make sure that kids cleaned up after themselves the night before. And I'm literally in or on the, uh, the bleachers, bending over, pulling out some plastic bottles. And all of a sudden, they hear this guy yelling a dog's name and this dog barking. I'm literally looking over my shoulder and this big black dog is running across the field, probably unleashed from the pond walk, and they're walking up there and making him bullseye for yours truly, right? Like, oh, really? And I, I turn around, I get off the bleachers, I look at the dog. And this dog is coming ninety miles an hour, it's a big sucker. It's got a harness on it with a big handle on it, makes you feel good, right? Um, and he's barking at me, right? He's about five feet away, I just start talking to him, I said, what are you doing here? But that isn't my point, this is what you need to think about, and it's about security. For all the good dog owners where dogs listen, there's always one or two that don't. And what I really thought about is, well, I might have been stupid doing that. But, you know, kids and parents walk their kids, you know, there at Pistol Creek, at Sage, everywhere. So what happens if a mom is walking two kids, one in a stroller, one little one, and this dog comes and attacks her? What is she gonna do? What's a dog gonna do if the kid starts running? It's about safety, all right? It's about safety, it's as simple as that. And, you know, that's what you think about. The only thing I want to ask you is, is this bifurcated? In other words, the leash law and the dog park, the unleashed park, is it, is it gonna be bifurcated? So are you gonna do a leash law period first? And then, if, if you're not, I would do the leash law first immediately, as soon as possible, to take care of any kind of liability that you might have for the town and put that in place, and then try to find a place for a park for people um, that have dogs, whether you create a dog park and contain it in the fence. Like you said, Mayor, a lot of towns, um, have, um, contained dog parks that are on leash. One for large dogs, one for small. All right, but I just think from a safety perspective, you need to consider that. I mean, whether it's my grandkids, your grandkids, somebody walking there. Uh, my, my grandkids play soccer, siblings bring the little ones over there to watch the game. Nobody needs that. I can tell you that everybody that attends soccer games that have dogs on leash, there's never been a problem. Doesn't mean there's not gonna be, but, you know, it's something you need to consider. You need to adopt leash law now and then try to find a place where you can find a space, if it's applicable in town, to contain the dogs where they want to sleep and do what they want. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Sarah Bozo, one Friday, Elwood. Um, after hearing the testimony today, especially from the gentleman that just spoke, um, it sounds like a lot of, uh, residents are using fields for off-leash dog running. And I think that's only further evidence that the town does need the designated area for people to run their dogs, whether it's fenced in or not fenced. Um, you had alluded to some towns having off-leash sites such as, uh, Norwalk and, uh, Westport. They use a two-acre park with no fencing and, uh, to my knowledge, have not had any issues. Uh, someone had mentioned liability is a problem in town. And there's a lawyer that can correct me, but, uh, first state statute, uh, I believe that municipalities are absolved of any recreational liability as long as they're not charging for people to be on the property. And the only way for you to have liability is if you're not posting any potential threats, i.e. dogs off-leash. So I think those are a couple of things to consider moving forward. Um, in terms of having, uh, equity or equality in terms of use of parks, we do have over a thousand acres of open space. Um, and I don't think it's a big ask to have several acres, not even be a percentile of our open space being dedicated to some type of space for. I am a little concerned with the wine sap issue, not so much about the dogs. But, um, I'm hearing repeated, uh, comments from the audience about increased traffic down the road and other complaints. Um, and I just want to make sure that the town is aware that they're not gonna take any action against that entrance. That's a public park, that's an open space. Homes are there, people who moved into that neighborhood knew that park and access was there. And I don't think anything should be done to infringe that access to that park. I know there are other, um, entryways to the bicentennial property from other areas, but it's a very important spot for access for a majority of our town. It's very convenient and it's not something that should be infringed upon because of a couple of complaints from neighbors. Furthermore, if the, if a dog park is proposed at a location, someone, uh, a previous speaker had said that it's not fair to burden the people of wine sap with that problem. Well, then I guess the issue needs, then the area needs to be near no residences at all because I don't understand why residents of one particular street would have priority over other residents where a potential dog park or off-leash area would go. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is CEO. Uh, Jerry Bacon, twenty-four Maple Street, thirty-three Resonant, Councilor. Um, I am a daily user of bicentennial park and my dog. And my dog is off-leash most of the time, although I do, uh, make sure that I have my dog on me from the park until well into the park, almost to where the, where the sign is, where the map is there. Um, there, I know there are a lot of other people that don't do that. I try to, I tend not to be a police or anything. Uh, I don't have a badge on me. I try to tell other dog owners to, you know, keep your dog on the and when we leave the park, um, usually within about a hundred feet or so of the sign, uh, the group of people that are there, we always put our dogs on the and walk to the park. There are some people that don't. Um, some people feel that they have their dog under control because they have a electric collar on where they can shock their dog. Other people feel that their dogs are under control, um, because, uh, they're, you know, well-behaved dogs and other people, uh, do, do not have that control of their dogs. Um, so I'm aware of the problems and all. Um, I know that, uh, you know, the people that use the park frequently, um, daily, we try to self-enforce a lot of the rules. We point out if there's a dog pooping, that somebody's got their back turned, you know, so that they pick it up. Uh, we, um, if there's a dog, that's it. Um, and I know a few of them, but they generally are on leads, um, when, when they are. If we see a dog, people approaching with their dogs on lead, we generally try to call our dogs and put them on the to the other person, say, it's okay, can I let my dog off the? Really, the, and, you know, you say it's for the benefit of a few. There are quite a few, you know, it's not, not just a handful. There are people, and I've been there, I'm retired, I go there at all different times of the day. Uh, there are a lot of citizens of Berlin that use it at all different times of the day and are very appreciative to have. It has always been, um, a dog-friendly park, uh, at least as I've known, and I've been there quite a few times. Um, it's a matter of, uh, being, making people aware of the, of the rules of, of the, you know, we're trying to self-enforce it. And, uh, I believe in, in the leash law, any litigation that protects the, any thing that protects the town gets litigation is good, you know? Um, and I know, uh, there are certain regulations. Um, I didn't get to read ordinance, I was looking for it online. And I just, I'm not that good at navigating, I guess. But, uh, I don't know what it says about electric fences or electric collars. Um, I had one person say today, well, if they say no electric fences, uh, are they gonna reimburse me? If they make them put their dog on a lead? But I don't think the town would do that, but just something else. But as far as the wording and everything, uh, I agree that, and the way social media state, we don't want to advertise as a dog park. If it gets advertised on social media as a dog park, we will be inundated with people from all over, um, from all over the state. Um, but I do like that it's a, it's temporarily a off-leash area. Like the metal or the theater, you know, it could be after a hundred feet, a hundred feet into the park. Actually, I would like to see it permanently listed as a temporary area. So that, that, if, if there's an instance where there is a problem, um, that you can say, okay, it's, it's not temporary, we're making another law. Um, anyways, um, one other thing about the use of the fields and the dogs on the fields, uh, is that um, I take my dog sometimes up to a personal soccer field during the winter time. When there's no soccer games on, there's no people. Now, I understand keeping the, uh, the dogs in season off the fields. Um, people might walk through certain areas, uh, off-season when there are no things going on. I don't know if that can be, uh, adjusted at all. And also, it should be just dogs and not animals because I don't know who's gonna tell that one day a kind of a hundred and eighty Canadian geese within the fenced area, a personal field, you know, so, but, uh, yeah, yeah, we can't, we can't keep all animals off those fields. Anyways, I just think that, uh, there are an awful lot, not just a few people that use bicentennial park and are very appreciative that they can take their dogs there. I know parking can be a problem, especially this time of year from when people get out of work, they like to bring their dogs there. They only have like a half hour to forty-five minutes of, of daylight before it gets dark. And the parking there does get, uh, a little confusing. But it's only an hour during the day, you know, right before sunset. Again, I just want to thank you all.
Sure. Yeah. I'm sorry, I just, um, appreciate your comments. I, I do want to just answer, you know, taking dogs on, on fields, not during playing time, during the winter or whatever. You can still ruin the field. Uh, we have our growing season, most of our fields are grass. So we start growing it in November and it actually will continue under the snow or whatever. You throw a dog on there, it's tracking it up, it's gonna muck it up. We have, we already have issues with weather that we can't control. But we do ask everybody, no dogs on any field at any point in time during the year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody else? Or on Zoom? Thank you all for your comments. Uh, now, it's a public hearing, councilors. Couple of things I will say, so I guess I look upon this, uh, as a, a good time in Berlin's history because this, this issue, however we wanted to find the issue, has gone on for how many years? Thirty, twenty? So we're trying to solve it now, so that, that's, that's a good thing, I think. We're, we're trying to work this out. We're obviously, we've been working on, on the ordinance committee, I think, for at least two years, I think, right here. At least, um, trying to come up with a solution, which I'm confident we can and we will and we, we hopefully can solve it once and for all. So I, I think it's finally, we're finally trying to get to that point. Um, it seems like, um, it's been ignored for a long time, uh, of whatever side. And it doesn't matter which side of the argument you're on, which side of the issue you're on. It's been ignored, so we're trying to solve it, that's what we're trying to do. And I'm pretty confident we can solve it. And from a public safety stand for, standpoint, we look extensively through our, you know, police database and animal control database. And, you know, we honestly could find no documented, uh, dog bites, attacks at, at bicentennial at that location. The, as I think I mentioned earlier, the attacks seem, unfortunately, seem to have occurred in the neighborhoods. Um, and we've had a couple of serious ones over the last few years, so that is the purpose of finally looking at our leash law, which we haven't really looked at for, again, many years as well. So that, and that part to gentlemen, that part, when, when we pass this, that will be enacted immediately, the leash law. Vote on it at the next council meeting if this is ready to go. Carb out, it's just, you know, we gave it six months. We've been looking at different locations, we're gonna continue that. And I, I'm confident at the end of the six months, when that bicentennial drops off or wherever, wherever it ends up, we will have a solution uh, for an area that I think, you know, we can accommodate people with their dogs. I mean, I have a dog too, many people have dogs. So we're trying to accommodate everyone in town the best we can, right? So all of our towns, you know, all of these fields are the townspeople for different purposes. Um, so we're trying to do the best we can for everyone. I think, I think we'll, we'll solve it. So I, I look upon all this discussion, it's great, it's good stuff. Uh, so the council needs to hear as well, the townspeople need to hear each other's opinions. And I think, uh, I'm sure Berlin, knowing the community that we have, we can, we can come to some conclusion and accommodate, well, everyone, we know everyone can, we can get everybody happy, we understand that. But trying to get the, the majority of the people happy in town with, with what we do with this particular issue. So we are gonna work very hard in the next six months to do that. But it, it will be enacted next meeting, which will, at least it will be enacted in a lot of other parts of town. Obviously, for obvious reasons, liability, safety and, uh, and many things. And of course, to keep our playing fields, um, you know, safe and, um, not destroyed. We spent a lot of money on the playing field, so, you know, it's good to keep them clean and neat and, uh, safe as possible for athletes. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, we'll take all this testimony, we'll, we'll, we'll be talking about it some more when we, when we close the public meeting, we still have it. We will discuss it at our, our next meeting, of course, before we pass the ordinance. And we, I, I thank you, Donna, for, you know, and people for looking at the language so we can tweak it and, uh, and fix it and do the best we can to accommodate, uh, everyone. So that's, that's where we're at and, uh, appreciate all the, all the comments from everyone. Okay, so no other council comments, correct? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And, uh, we will move on to our, our second public hearing, it's gonna be a long meeting tonight. A lot of things on the agenda afterwards, but that's okay. That's what we signed up for because we get the overtime payment.
I'm waiting for that too.
Yeah. Thank you all very much, folks. Appreciate it. Thanks for your comments from everyone. All right, so our second, we'll call our second meeting, uh, over. And the purpose is the amendments, uh, section sixteen, fifteen day of the taxation and finance ordinance, a chapter, uh, is that?
You want me to give it?
Yeah, other, I, I just finished this town's, I don't know, do men process for, like, for exemption for personal property taxation for vehicles for the handicap. You could add.
Correct. Just to be clear, uh, councilor, we, uh, this is a staff recommendation. Uh, and these handicap, uh, vehicles that we are talking about have special equipment. Um, so to give you an example, uh, special hand controls, lift ramps, special seating or stretchers, significant modifications to accommodate medical equipment such as oxygen, uh, mechanical respirators and other similar significant operations. Now, current ordinance requires the owners and the users of these, uh, vehicles to come and get an exemption each year. And, uh, we, we feel that, you know, if they do it once, that's enough and get rid of the annual requirement. So if they come to town, we give the exemption and that's.
In town, we give the exemption, and that's good, as long as they live in town, or as long as they want to. Yeah, we go up the quest.
So we are, we are in our public hearing, so. The purpose of it, so any public comments on this particular ordinance? None, town council, government? I have, I would agree, Rocha, I'm sure the council would agree that. Waste of everybody's time to do this, and and certainly. Someone, you know, that is in their situation, have to make them come forward every year, fill out a form, or whatever we have to do. Have the right things to do, so. Consider this one. The town meeting as well, so that's in the comments, we'll close this public hearing at this time, and we'll move on to our. Meeting agenda, thank you everyone again for being patient and letting everybody speak, that's that's what it's all about. All right, so on to agenda, item one.
Right, thank you, so the first item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty two non-bidet appropriation of two point two million dollars general fund on assigned fund balance to purchase five.
Yes, thank you, so this was the purpose of our town meeting earlier. So. We have any other questions from council members? Do you want to, not, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Move to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty two non-provision of two million two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund on assigned fund balance. The transfers to other funds, both in the general fund, on the purchase of two new fire vehicles. The balance owed on a third new fire vehicle to be delivered in early two thousand twenty two, and to appropriate the two million two hundred thousand dollars to the fire truck account. In the fire truck fund.
If you have to take a second on that, I sorry. Thank you, any other? Comments or questions on this? Council, there are none, all in favor?
I, I. Thank you, agenda item number two is the auction agreement for developments of the land to Columbus property, importantly, personal avenue, affordable senior housing. We have invited Mr. Froski to come in and do an update. So that you can conclude this.
Mr. George, welcome.
Evening. There goes it, so I can report, like, I think most of you already know, we procured. The balance of funding, we have commitments on that, the four percent tax application, tax credit application is in play at this point in time. We are scheduling, hopefully, December fifteenth, the meeting with DOH to go over the application. And get the ball rolling on the four percent tax credit, so I don't anticipate any issues with that at this point in time. So. Sticking to original timeframe, we should be able to close financing. First quarter of two thousand twenty two. Maybe a second quarter of two thousand twenty two, so this option agreement provides us to.
The necessary time to get that done. So, we're. Sounds like it's. Close as we've ever been, I hope we're over the finish line to finally get the funding to.
I'm hoping to break ground in the fall.
Wonderful, I think it works, you know, it's been a very long road and.
It's not, it's not a deal until the paperwork's closed.
Wow, it's transferred. I've never done the paperwork, done well with that, but.
D E P is also today provided their ground lease documentation, so that just came today, like late today. So we've been waiting on that for months now, so that's that's made an appearance, so that should make the closing a lot easier. And for the benefit of the councilmen who are due to this process.
Appreciate it.
So basically, there was native, the whole parcel assumes.
I'm in the hours for the bathroom. He'll, he'll do it very quickly, yes.
He'll be the McDonald's version, so. Um. It it encompasses an acre parcel of land that Tom gave to us, that entire eight acre parcel is part of the site plan process. Post the site plan approval, post some title searches, we discovered there was an easement on the property that prevented transfer title. That was from the state of Connecticut, preventing the town from transferring title due to some open space monies that were provided. Basically, encumbered about thirteen different properties throughout the town, this being one of them. It didn't come up in the initial title search, because again, it was part of a document that encompassed thirteen properties, so got missed apparently in the title search, and. Here we are, so as part of that process, we came upon a solution of a ground lease, where the town retained title to the property. We would lease the use for ninety nine years, similar to what we have at the senior center of the Berlin Housing Authority, so. After many months of discussions, the state has given us the approval for that, so the language is there, so that should make it easier to move forward.
Well, that's great, I'm. God only knows. We're at the finish line. Very, very long, and and that for last try. You know, the easement thing, that that took us, what, that was two years right there?
Yeah, right, but this got deep. Well, it was two years of negotiating back and forth.
Yeah, so.
Probably another six months, once agreement was reached to get to an actual.
Funding with the approval. Wait, just about every obstacle that we could have come. Come in front of us, we probably run into, run over it, stop this.
It's definitely been an interesting experience, so at least.
And the sad thing about it, right, is you've had this, a lot of that, you know, it does appear that with the state and perhaps the federal government too, that the. Senior housing funding is just, you know, not often been a priority, really.
The state is basically very geared their housing development priorities towards affordable family housing, so they're not looking at a specific age group, which I think is a, it's a shame, but. They are looking basically to develop affordable housing across the board, and you're looking for diversification when it comes to ages and familial statuses and incomes. This is Barbara Gamba testified a while back. Seniors have a certain need at certain age groups and having kids and, you know, teenagers. Building with seniors becomes problematic.
Yeah, every town's going through, and not just Berlin, you know, every town, the need for senior housing, and I I, to me, it is, it should be a unique carve out, portable is great, you can want that too, but. You know, we should take care of our seniors, they've given to our society for.
And I've spoke, I've spoken length on that topic to other people that'll listen up at the state level.
Yeah, you know, if they listen.
Well. Nothing has changed.
No, that's, that's a problem, but we forge ahead, so.
Yes.
Here we are, yeah. Well, hoping, we're hoping at the end of this road, beginning of the construction road, that's.
Yes, like I said, if we can get financing tied up by no later than the second quarter, we should be able to go out to bid. And start construction by the fall. You know, Jim Mahoney's working on the Brownfield remediation grant, we've had some discussions on that, so, you know, every little bit helps towards achieving that goal.
Okay, great, thank you, the update. Thanks, John. So, any other new questions, council comments? Bring on, so I'm ahead and. Take a motion?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm authorized to tell manager to extend the option agreement between the town and the Berlin Housing Authority from the end date of December thirty first, two thousand twenty one. New end date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two.
A second on that? Any other comments or questions? There are none, all those in favor?
I, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, then item number three, some housekeeping items, but they're transvestite here over with the accounts, and they have given delay. And with you, do you give a? What do you, Kevin?
Hello, Kevin.
Hello, good evening, we've got a couple minor transfers here, just to align the budget. With the departure of the director and assistant director of the V N A earlier in the year. The town manager took the opportunity to reevaluate the structure and consider various alternatives of how to run the department. And with that, with that change, the mid manager position is now assuming the administration role. And so the first adjustment is just realigning the budget dollars from department head to the mid manager line to cover the compensation for that. With their departure, there was also some work that they were doing on coding so that we could bill for services. And so the second adjustment just helps fund the money that was needed in the short term, while some existing staff were trained to take that over. And then the last one is what may very well be the first of of many transfers this year, as we're seeing sharp increases in costs. As the garage begins the process of trying to prepare our highway fleet for the upcoming winter, they're getting indications of of larger increases. For cost, and so this is a a minor transfer in the snow and ice materials to prep the plows and other items as we get ready for winter.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions from Kevin? Not going to take a motion?
Yeah, move to transfer twenty five thousand one hundred and forty dollars as detailed on the company's spreadsheet. Over higher than budgeted expenditures and identify the counts.
Second on that, okay, thank you very much, any other comments or questions from the council? Very none, all in favor?
I, I. Oh. Someone.
Thank you.
Then item number four is purchase of three vans to be used for student transportation by the Berlin Public Schools, and the New Britain Transportation Company. Mr. Kugno is on the line to give us a quick summary.
Hi, Jeff.
You're on mute, Jeff. Still on mute? Jeff, you're on mute?
I apologize, sorry, I thought I hit the button already. You have in front of you tonight a a motion to consider approving. A purchase order for three vans, as you all know, we provide vans to the New Britain Transportation Company, that's our vendor for transportation. The town owns the vans, and they basically utilize those to move our students, that's our, that's part of our model. Every periodically, we have to buy some new ones, because we have out of thirty some odd vans, we have some very, very old ones, we have some ones that have many, many miles on them. There was a number of them that weren't replaced over a few years back, and what we have been doing over the last three years is. Providing a few new vans every year, so we can get the fleet up to snuff, so what you have in front of you today is is the a. Purchase order or approval of a purchase order for three vans, there'll be new vans naturally. The. These are seven passenger vans, we do both ten passenger and seven passenger vans, we we have analyzed what we need the best and what we have to replace. And as you might remember from the last time I was in front of you, they, we've retired like seven vans three years ago. We've since that time bought four vans, and we're trying to buy another three now. And this year, we we ran into a little bit of a problem, because they're not producing as many vans as they were because of COVID. And so it took us a while to get someplace that would take an order from us. We're now ordering something, and the vans won't actually be in until they tell us early spring at the best. But that's why we're getting three, because we think by the time we get them, we're gonna be going forward to see if we can probably get a few more, so. I ask your pool to do this, I do want to note one thing, in the the action motion, at least the. The write out that I have, there seems to be a clerical error, even though the. It's written out as ninety two thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars and eight cents, the parentheses with the numero, numero in it, numer, excuse me, the numbers in it. Only say ninety one, so that needs to be ninety two, one thirty one, oh eight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any questions, you got? How much from the council?
It's crazy, usually we get a. Bank of. Help that's paid from, just so the manager's gonna find the money, is he feeling generous or? Yeah, yeah, oh, thank you.
Rocha, you ready to chat?
Always. What is I'm saying? Jeff, it's the money's in the town account. I don't think you put the account numbers in there, you want to speak to that, that's why it's coming, council.
Yeah, I just, all I did was put in that it was in a general fund budget, it's, you have a hundred and ten thousand dollars this year in a hundred and ten budget for, in in the general fund budget for. Vans for the Board of Ed. And this money's coming out of there, maybe Kevin could, I don't know if Kevin's still here, he can probably speak to.
That is just my question, thank you. Sixty one.
That's what it is, yeah, that's why it's coming from the council.
Okay. All right. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, guys, yep.
All right, we're good, so go ahead and take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm authorized to tell manager to provide a purchase order, and to subsequently provide funds to purchase three two thousand twenty two four transit connect vans. Amount of thirty thousand. Seven hundred and ten dollars and thirty six cents each, pulling the amount of ninety two thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars and eight cents. Assuming to the state contract number of nineteen P S X zero one six.
Second, second, any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
I, I. voting, someone. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five is a purchase of one midsize international dump truck. All season body from Nutmeg International, lighting source will contract. And a one Monroe, snowplow from equipment specialist. Simon's here to. About the agenda.
Back in September, we were provided funding to purchase a midsize dump truck. Around for real suspects, we're with Steve Carper Highway Department, make sure the specifications meet their needs. And we are now here, award that bit. Unfortunately, it will not be here for this one. What a surprise, right?
Oh, yeah.
Seems to be the case with everything. So it's, you notice that there's two two separate things there, there's the the dump truck or the truck and the dump truck. When when it actually came back, we found or noticed that we omitted the snowplow on there, so that's why you see two different ones. The snowplow is underneath ten thousand dollars, but when we put it together with trucks, it then is over ten thousand dollars and still used for the same purpose. Beats the criteria to come out. So I had a curiosity, this, so this new truck, how long, how long does that last? Twenty years. Twenty years. Twenty years, yeah. That's the estimated timeframe. Really, huh? Pretty good, currently, currently, we have trucks on the road that are just over twenty years, but that's what we try to get rid of them after. Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty good for the beating they take, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Nothing, appreciate you keep them that long. And they get the job done, so, okay, any questions for Jim? I'm not saying that in that twenty years, they don't come in for extensive repair. I I figured that. Repair bills, but, you know. Yeah. When you're all vehicle. Any questions for Jim? There are none, go ahead and take a motion?
The first one, move to approve the purchase of one midsize international dump truck, with a most season body from Nutmeg International, perfect Connecticut. Lighting source will contract over zero six zero nine two zero N B S for a price not to exceed one hundred and sixty six thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars and.
Okay, second on that. Any other questions? There are none, all of them in favor?
I, I. Oh, it's a move, second motion, I move to approve purchase of one Monroe. Second motion, I moved to approve purchase of one Monroe snowplow from Equipment Specialist of Parkford, Connecticut for a price left, we'd see nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? I mean, none? All of us in favor?
Aye. Oh. The move.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Next item too.
You're still here.
Top of the year for us to think about gasoline. So this is a question we have the purchasing, I'm going to purchase gasoline from East River Energy, but they're made up twenty-twenty-one.
What a bad, what a bad time.
The price is, the price is up. Let me get, let me guess.
Price is up. So anyway, we, 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 last night we came here, we did a two-year contract. And we've been purchasing gasoline for the last two years at a dollar seventy-two gallon.
Oh, nice.
So unfortunately, we purchased it when COVID had the lockdown and there was ample amounts of gas around. Now that we have no gas around, it's time to think about this again. So when we did that, two-year contract, we came up a little bit short. So we don't have enough gas because when we do the contract, the gas, it's either gallons or timeframe calendar year. We came up one month short and we came up probably about eight thousand gallons short on gas. So we have to get through December. We did put some, we did put our requirements through PRAD so that they're out to bid currently now, and they're coming back on the fifteenth of December. So while we back here talking to you again. But tonight, what I'm asking for, well, let me back up. So in my negotiations with East River Energy, and we've had East River Energy for a number of years. He says, you know, and I talked to him late this afternoon again to make sure everything was, was in line. He says, I'll, I'll give you a contract next year for two dollars and thirty-five cents. Which isn't, isn't a bad, but I don't think that that's something that we need to jump at right away. Let's get through December. Let's see where our bids come back at and take that gamble. I mean, it's another two weeks. Can it go up? Yeah, it can go up, but it also can go down. And with the current news that's out there, we're all watching the stock market go down. So maybe, maybe we'll get lucky.
As well, it's come down and up.
Yeah, it's. Unfortunately, we were self-sufficient for oil products. But that's changed. Now we're back to purchasing oil and now we're back to what's going on over in other countries.
Exporting oil. Now we stop doing that.
So, so what I'm asking for, we're going to purchase some gas through East River Energy, at least through the end of December. And then we're looking to bid. East River Energy's been with us for a number of years. They have helped us out a number of times. Like to finish off the year with them and see where we go. Hopefully they'll be back.
All right, any questions for Jim? If not, we're going to take a motion.
I moved to waive those purchasing requirements to purchase gasoline from East River Energy in Gilbert, Connecticut for the remainder of two thousand twenty-one. Utilizing a differential, and this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that. Any other questions or comments? I mean, none? All of us in favor?
Aye. Close. And some more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is a big slow technology computer replacement, and this is a placement of read sixteen mobile data terminals used to police crews. I don't see anyone from the PD here, but we are utilizing a state contract to suggest that. Or just.
All right. Any questions for Ross? We're gonna replace these every so often. Take a motion on this?
I moved to approve the purchase of MVT of those long technology group LLC for a month not to exceed forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars using state contract number thirteen PSX zero two eight zero and WNC dash one oh eight.
Second on that.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? There are none? All of us in favor? Right?
Close.
Thank you. Then the item number eight is bank, bank policy, return of billing. And this was discussed with the ordinance committee. It's a policy, it's not an ordinance change. And it's in front of you now. Probably recall, we had a request to buy certain flags and we didn't have a policy, council, or to be good to have some language in there so that there's some guidance and feature request made. And this pretty much summarizes, it pretty much says what kind of flag you can fly. It includes the flag of the United States of America, State of Connecticut, and the Town of Bowen. In addition to that, the PAW, PAW MIA flag, official service flag of, you know, forces of the United States. Official flag, define what service and then going in, under union commission of the unit service to the state of Connecticut of the United States. That's the policy that's in front of you.
Yes. Yeah, thanks, Ross. So we, we had some discussion ordinance committee and what we came up with. And, you know, the reason behind it is really if we, whoever may come to the town and want why whatever flag it, it may be, now it just would be probably an endless line of flags being up and down and people being whatever flag is flown, someone's going to be offended by it and probably just not the best policy for town. So how we have always recognized different days, different people that have worked for the town, whatever, by proclamation. So, you know, we'll continue with that. Obviously, that's what we do, town council. Issues of proclamation, again, whatever special occasion or, or special person we're trying to honor. So that's what we will continue to do. So this is, otherwise, the flag thing will be very difficult to decide other than let everybody fly whatever flag they want to fly at some point or have to, you know. Which would be impossible. That's why we came up with this flag that we have listed in the policy. So that's where we're at. Place. So what do you, what do you guys think?
Yes.
Yeah.
Today, I was following, I think it was Berlin's fire truck. And I guess it was false alarm upon Chamberlain Highways somewhere. And I noticed two flags flying in the back of the fire truck. One was the United States of America flag of glory. And there was a flag next to it that resembled the glory, but had only one blue stripe on it. Does that qualify under this policy as an American flag?
I don't know what that flag is. So somebody saying to one of these flags that are listed here.
Welcome back. Hi there.
The flag that's flown on, on the back of all Berlin fire trucks and I'm saying Berlin company, the one that's on the highway is the American flag. And next to the American flag is the I support our police department. But is it covered under this? Oh, that I do not know. That's my question.
Question.
Can we address that?
Yes, please.
The policy that's in front of you is applicable to any properties owned or maintained by County Berlin. So it wouldn't cover I think those as well as.
I, I, just to chime in here, I, I think the issue to me would be whether or not it's the official department flag of the fire department. Now whether or not it's resting on town property. So is there, is there some sort of official policy in place that would state that this is the official flag of the Berlin Fire Department or?
It is not the official flag of Berlin Fire Department. It goes back a number of years. We ran that flag. I'm going to probably say five to seven years on the back of the fire truck. Just to show support for our teammates for our police.
Well, in that light, maybe we have to revisit this, this policy. I mean, there could be other exceptions out there that we're not aware of. I mean, it'd be kind of embarrassing to pass this and then go down, yank and flags off of fire trucks or wherever. Yeah, I don't think we would, but not, not have to pick up a flag. But, but it is a good point. I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, there could be endless exceptions, I suppose. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't, I, yeah, I followed that truck quite a way and it didn't offend me, you know?
No, no, no.
That's not the point.
No, no, no.
It's, it's gotta be on there properly and I, and that's my point. I think we have to revisit this. Take a good look at the whole policy and see what we're doing.
You have a sedition. Pardon? You have a sedition.
Well, I hate the form of committee to do it, but I should probably go back to, back to the ordinance committee.
Or this committee. There we go.
Might, might I suggest looking into what, what sort of system we can have in place for defining what the official department flag department of Berlin would be? I think that would be a good place to start. Having some sort of concrete tangible definition placed so that if this issue were to be addressed in the future, we can point to it in the policy and say, this is what being an official department flag of Berlin, whatever department that may be, is particularly in the context of law enforcement.
I mean, this is not, that flag is not by department flag. So one, one sedition is acts of the policy, but perhaps the council wants to approve any exceptions to the policy.
We could do that too.
And you're not going to have, no, just.
Yeah, but.
I don't recommend that. The whole, the whole idea behind policy, the policy is patterned after the state Capitol Police Policy. Right? And the whole idea behind having a flag policy so that you establish that flying the flags on town property is government speech in a non-public forum. If you engage in limited viewpoint discrimination by making exceptions, then you're going to invalidate the policy. So have, have the policy say whatever you want, but I don't recommend. There's two towns out there that are going the exception route.
Yeah.
And that's a obligation.
That's, yeah. Maybe Yoda knows.
I was looking at some other towns that have other spaces they, they constructed other, like both spaces that they fly, other flags that have to be approved by town council that aren't necessarily, you know, deemed town property or at least official town property. Maybe if we go back to ordinance, maybe we could, but maybe think about that as well. Having an area where people can fly, they can be supplied to fly it, or fly it for a certain time. Might be something you can do. You know, because again, I sure, no, nobody here wants to be like, let's pick this flag or pick that flag.
Yeah, do that.
I mean, obviously, we have free speech here.
Well, they can fly any, you know, private property wherever they want to fly it on private property.
There's no free speech right when it comes to government property.
Yeah, no, I agree.
The fire department can designate their own banner, correct? According to this. They can fly their own departmental flag.
Yeah.
Would there be any limit to the number of flags they could count? Because the fire department says, this is one of our official banners and we're going to use it.
Yeah.
Take it out of this.
Another one of questions, hold on.
One question hasn't been designated as their banner, right? They designated as a banner officially. They have a different one.
My question is, can you ask?
No.
Be official flags.
Official flags. One official flag.
Hey, it's a good try. Yeah, back to the, back to the drawing board? Yeah. Yeah, Peter, yeah. Yeah, we can, we can hold on. Yeah. That'll teach you to go driving around. Yeah. All right, let, let's, we can just go back and have some more discussion. Yeah, we'll take no action at this point. Go back. Think about it. Certainly opposed to supporting our police department, but you know, we didn't have to fit into our policies. Okay, number nine.
Item number nine is questioning a bit of authorizing street scan and that's comprehensive payment conditions, evaluation, town roadways. I'm going to share, talk about it. You probably recall the editor coming back about how we might use this tool and who out all the remember that.
Believe in town, yes. Like. For the new members of the council, in May, we had Street Scan, Street Scan come in and show, demonstrate the how there's a high-tech method of inspecting pavement conditions of all roadways. It's actually, I, I think, a nice objective way to get a report card of the entire town roadway system. So I think you, people were here, were pretty impressed with it. So what we've done is, and this is in line with past public works directors. They've been doing it probably every eight or 10 years to do like a report card of the entire town. And in this case, what we'll do is we'll be publishing a map on the website that will show the worst roads in red and then the best roads in green, and then there'll be various shades of fair and poor satisfaction. So this is going to be a public thing. It may come back to bite me because people are going to call up saying, my roads in red, why isn't it being paved? So. Probably gonna happen. Yeah, I know, I know. I've been through this before. So in two thousand eleven, data engineering did it for a cost of nineteen thousand dollars. What we did was we got a proposal from Street Scan. What they will do is for fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, do the entire data collection, data processing. And then for another seventy-five hundred dollars, we can use their software, which actually has their three hundred and sixty-degree imagery. And we can run budget scenarios based on what budget we have versus what their artificial intelligence program is essentially recommending for certain roads and for certain pavement scores. So all in the cost is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred roughly. We got another competitive proposal from Infrastructure Management Services, also known as IMS. Their proposal was forty-nine thousand for a comparable approach. And I also looked at there are some companies out there that do smartphone, sort of, you can put your smartphone, mount it on the dashboard and go, and then they have processing, which may be the way we do it next time, but the cost was even more and they weren't doing in this country, they were doing in Europe. So there's no real track record. So we looked around. We think this is the best approach. It's competitive cost-wise with two thousand eleven and obviously with IMS' proposal. So we'd like to get that rolling so that we can maximize our dollars, because I know we don't, the town doesn't want to bond anytime soon. So we can maximize our dollars and also really figure out where the worst, worst roads are now, you know, objectively. So this is the request.
Put the old ones in.
The road is just, it's actually just in front of my house.
It will be red. It might be red on the map. So it will be, you know, prioritized. How, yeah. How do we think, what do we think the overall condition of our roads are? I think we have a backlog of roads in poor and unsatisfactory condition right now. Yeah. And I went through this when I worked in Wilton. They did a five-year bonding program because the paving budget was cut every year until residents started screaming. Yeah. And at that point, but they were bonding like three million dollars a year to get it done. And they were trying to do 10 miles a year. And, and when I left, that was six years into it and they still were, you know, still chipping away at it, but it wasn't improving the conditions. Although this is for those roads that sort of get forgot, you know, so as well as the main roads we want to get back to. Yeah, well, we're going to know what we got first. Okay, questions for Mike?
Do you see a particular area in which there are, with a particularly high concentration of unsatisfactory roads? Direct our attention specifically?
Well, CNG has been doing gas extensions up on West Lane. There's a whole area there that is, and then they're also going to be doing possibly a development up there. So we've been holding off on doing West Lane, that whole network of roads because if the development comes in, they're going to have construction traffic, but we can't really wait any longer. I mean, West Lane is just terrible. That whole area, that whole quadrant, just below Shuttle Meadow is just terrible. And we've been knocking off some roads as well on the east side of town. But it's, there are clusters because a lot of times the roads were done at the same time. So all the roads in one area. But it's, there are clusters because a lot of times the roads were done at the same time, so all the roads in one area, odd. Is just, they're pathetic, so if you go in and just do one, the residents will be going, well, why didn't you do? Mine and my neighbors, and you know, you go down, so you'd like to do a whole cluster in one shot because that's how it was done in the first place. But West Lane Northwest corner of town is terrible. And that's all my my hit with Berlin Street is also terrible, Spruce Brook is also terrible, I mean, I can just keep going on. I got my own hit list.
This is obviously really the town roads, but as far as stayards. Do they recommend, does the state feel like, hey, can you come in and take care of this stuff, or is that, I mean, is that even covered?
Uh, no, it's only town roads. Yeah, the the DOT does their own inspection, and I think they're gonna be doing Channel Highway coming north where they stop like by Butler. So they're gonna come up north and they're gonna be doing um another area of north part of town, so they are gonna be chipping away, I hope. Um, and we can also lobby, you know, it's free speech as we're talking about. I I'm hoping, yeah. Uh, oh, well, there's money coming, it's just how it funnels to us through the state, using the DOT and the CROG will funnel the money, and I think. They're gonna be, their coffers are gonna be full because of all that money that's coming through infrastructure, uh feds, so yeah, I'm I'm expecting. And I'm expecting, I've heard word that the CROG is gonna be actually looking for um applications because they know the money's coming. So they're gonna wanna empty their coffers before that that next tranche comes in. Absolutely, yeah.
Mike, did they give you a timeframe, how long it's taking to do this?
Um, all in, I think, was three months, yeah, and that's weather dependent, so they have to go out and do the scan, and scan isn't really. Where I think most of the time is gonna be, it's gonna be processing it and then presenting it. A hundred and ten, yeah, so that's two hundred and twenty lane miles, so it's, you know, you go up and down, it's two hundred and twenty miles of driving around.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mike, and uh, wanna take a motion on this?
We'll authorize the town manager to waive the bidding requirements award the contract to Street Scan.
Second on that. Any other questions?
Wait, thank you. So agenda item number ten is a discussion item of the uh. Eagle wash bay, uh if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had a price and the council recommended. Uh, order the public commission to. We're gonna look at this, and they did, and we have some recommendations and like.
Um, it's been a long road, uh and even before the PVC, Public Building Commission got the referral. Facilities did some work with architectural firms to take a look at the existing. Uh, truck wash bay, which is about thirty-four feet long by twenty-four feet wide, barely even fits uh a plow, a truck with a plow on it. Um, and it has canvas size and, you know, it really never worked right because it's open to the to the elements. The funding that was appropriated, almost approximately half a million dollars, was based on just extending that about eight or nine feet to the front. So um the PVC, well, like, go back to what the PVC has done. Essentially, they took the referral to look at all the documents and the statement of need, went through. Had staff and PVC, um the commissioners doing some research on what sort of truck wash approach would be appropriate and and uh productive. So the idea was a fully automated touch the system and and a fully enclosed condition builder. So like a car wash, but for trucks, so that was the uh the approach that was taken, so we did research. Um, we also found out that the existing highway garage is not, does not have enough electrical um service that nor. The normal breakers less than the panel, so um some of the reasons why some of these costs are high is because we have to run new electric service from Jim's garage. Across to the new um to a new building with a whole new panel, and that's probably, that was an estimate was twenty-five thousand dollars for that, so. When we look at these costs, it's not just building, it's what's gonna actually power this um this wash face system. So to just cut to the chase, the PVC put out a design build request, got one bid in April for eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Of course, that wasn't gonna fly, so they um revised, revamped the bid. Put it back out on the street for about two months because this is designed built, so actually the bidders are giving us schematic design drawings. This isn't like an architect puts drawings out there and says bid on it to a contractor, this is a design build team effort. So we ju- we have to put basis of design information, and then they will give us drawings, so we came back in um August, three bidders responded. The range was from eight hundred ninety-seven thousand to about one point one million. We looked at the proposals, there were a lot of um discrepancies, we went back to the um the bidders. They should follow up request on scope and fee, got back additional information. One bidder, Jay Rosa, held their bid, said they would do everything. Um, the second, the apparent little bidder, which was diversity builders, their price went up about ninety thousand dollars. So they now are in second place, and they were still having the highway department doing a lot of work, so. Uh, bottom line is, um if we apply the alternate, which was also included to take out the wash, the wash system. Which the PVC wanted to do because they knew there were funding constraints, um the number is about seven hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. The funding that's available is about five hundred thousand dollars, so we're about three hundred thousand dollars late on this. So that's why this is a discussion item and not a recommendation to proceed with Jay Rosa. So the PVC tasked me with coming here with options to discuss with you on, well, number one, what you think of the proposal. Which will be a sixty-foot long by twenty-four foot wi- wide bay next to the existing garage on the right-hand side, as you're facing the base. With um electrical, water, um gas, the gas will have to be moved around as well. All of that utility infrastructure will be able to supply a new um full, fully automated system, but that would follow. Because that's about a hundred seventy thousand dollars. The highway department could revamp what they have in a new building, and then when funding became available, we reach out to the manufacturer, have them put the system in. So even without the system with three hundred thousand dollars, sure.
So no system, no automatic system, but still.
Pressure washer, yeah, 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 a more of a manual system, they have, they're very creative in the highway department, they, you know, they're already doing. They're already doing it without any sort of enclosed space, so um so that was one way to deal with the funding shortfall. But you're still three hundred thousand dollars in the red, so where can we get this money?
Candy sales.
Yeah, um, so I work with finance, there's.
Our wash is at the bay there.
Well, other departments can use this, Jim could run his trucks or cars through, so the mechanics have a nice clean vehicle, let it dry, come in. Police department could use it, uh facilities can run all their stuff, I don't know if the board of ed wants to use, maybe we can charge them, I don't know, but. So um, yeah, and it's it's like a three-minute cycle, I I went to the one in Norwich, very impressive. Brand new system, yeah, I went through, they actually ran it, they were so proud of it, they ran it through, and it was, it it just, it's um, it's a stage system. It applies the concentrated detergent in the beginning, like have these big trays and spinners, and they have an undercarriage wash, which actually just blasts everything off. And then it goes to allows it to soak, and then they have rinse cycles, and then at the very end, they have like sort of a another blast. And it comes out and it just uh, it's, they love it, Public Works Department loves, and they use it for the school buses, um garbage trucks. Yeah, but they have a whole, they have a sort of a combined system up there. They have public works, they have their water sewer department, garbage, I think the garbage trucks too in the municipal, so it's a large fleet. And that was almost a million bucks.
There was an inherent savings in that, um not look at any dirt around. Or ice or snow, saving fuel.
Yeah, and PVC also noted, you're not having a guy there washing a truck for twenty minutes, half an hour, he's doing three minutes, boom, he's done. He's doing something else, so.
I know that major airlines wash planes because it costs money to carry dirt.
I think you, I worked for UPS for a while, and they had almost daily wash-throughs, they just ran them right through. And there's a reason for that. So I listed a bunch of things here where you could get money from, and it includes the uh, you know. The legendary unassigned fund balance. Yeah, well, it's always there available for something, um we could include the capital project in the next budget. We could wait for a future surplus, we could utilize future low SIP funds. We can tag teams, tag some money in from our contractual services account. And we're, we're, I think we're gonna be getting over two hundred thousand dollars from the cleanup reimbursement for Tropical Storm Isaiah's. Which is largely funding public works and highway, so if council thought that was an approach, because that wouldn't affect the tax rate or anything. So that is another option, so essentially, there's a bunch of options, we can cobble something together if the town council directed us to. Come back with a firm recommendation, account numbers, hard numbers from Rose, because I think Rose will have to. They might have to increase their um numbers slightly because they were holding their fees till the end of October, so. But they seem very reasonable, and I was very impressed when they came back with the follow-up, they said, no, price is the same, turnkey, we're doing it all. And they didn't change their their number once, but once said.
Yeah, what do you, what do you all, what do you think? Keeping a vehicle clean makes a living a lot longer with the roads, and Jim will tell you the biggest problem with the truck.
Right.
Is this in the flood plain or is that?
Yes, it is.
Wanna build a million-dollar building in the flood plain?
Well, in this case, it's a building that's meant to be flooded, so it's it's the inside of it is gonna be curly, black. I know what you mean, but um what they'll have to do is when they do the mechanical equipment, they're gonna have to raise it above a hundred-year flood elevation, that's actually in the RFP. It's also noted that they're gonna have to, um whatever those equalizing systems are for flood, you have to sort of like let the flood. Waters go through so you don't put hydrostatic pressure on the uh on the walls. That would have to be included in this, but this building is actually. Uh, the oil water separator is there right now, yeah.
That's already there.
Yeah, we can use that that existing system and also sanitary sewer, because it's gonna be right over where the existing drain is. It's not optimal that it's where it, you know, but the highway garage is there, and the public grounds garage is there, and it's flooded during item, and so everyone knows, so. Unless we're talking moving the whole complex somewhere else. Well, we could fit two plow trucks with the plows on, which actually is like another bay. So for winter storage, if you're uh, we're we're running, as Jim pointed out to me, we're running short on storage for um sweeper of the, you know, our tractor and everything else, so. If what we're not using, we could actually put two plow trucks in there like we have in the other bays, so it actually would almost act as another bay when it's not being in use. If that makes you feel any better. Yes, yeah, Kevin and I have been working on uh that, along with everyone of the other departments, yes. I think it's gonna be two twenty, yeah, it's in that range, yeah.
That's pretty much been accounted for in terms of of stuff that you would have to do.
Uh, well, we already spent the money, is that, yeah, we've already, like, it was overtime for the guys, it was actually, some of it was straight time, so. That wasn't an extra expense to the town, although they were working for like three months cleaning up the entire town. Um, but yeah, that money's been spent, so it'll come in, it won't be replenishing anything unless unless we wanna put it into certain accounts.
Okay, well, um, I I guess I would suggest you come back and find the money and.
Okay.
Pay for the rest of it, all right?
And then we'll see what happens. Well, thank you.
Is that good?
Okay, I'll work with finance and we'll see if we can uh put a nice little package together. Well, I'll I'll reach out to him.
Something like this.
Yeah, you mean like a low SIP type of thing? Well, we don't wanna take the roofs, you know, no, yeah. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Tonight, I'm number eleven, speaking of the. This is an application for low SIP grant for re-roofing it and related work for the grounds highway, water department building within the physical services complex. Town Farm Lane.
Good on Doug.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'd like to utilize the low SIP uh grant for this project, um we've we've had this in capital for a few years, and it's a good opportunity. To utilize this to uh take care of the roofs at these buildings within the physical services.
Thirty years, I guess that's enough, squeeze enough time out. Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, uh thirty years, and I'm sure we're uh. Got some problems there, I would imagine. So um, have the grant, so it makes sense to me, what do you all think? Okay, so uh, there's no other questions to Doug, we're gonna take a motion.
And we'll authorize the town manager to apply for a three hundred and nineteen thousand low SIP grant. Re-roofing and related work at the grounds highway and water department building, so Town Farm Lane.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions for Doug? During Donald's favor?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Very interesting, uh few words in the items, Mr. Mahoney's been helping out with those things. First one, section uh eight dash twenty-four of total construction, trail definitely could connect the town. What complex in Percival Field, Jim?
Yes, recently, uh you recall, we had an Eagle Scout through the bridge. Uh, behind Marjorie Moore that would connect into Percival Field, and the next step is to. Build the trail connection from the parking lot at Town Hall. Uh, get over to the soccer field, I think there's, you know, plans to do some work at the soccer field, so we'll probably just do the next step. And then proceed from there, but um I think it's it's overdue to kinda complete this connection of the nearby properties that the town owns. And uh so we wanted to uh get the process started by doing a four, a twenty-four review to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, uh any questions for Jim? No, if not, go ahead and take a motion.
We'll refer the construction of each trail at the Town Hall Complex in Percival Park. The Planning and Zoning Commission for pursuing section twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes.
Any other comments or questions? During Donald's favor?
Thank you. Next item is eight dash twenty-four review, you have control. I'm back from P and Z.
So the, you know, the strategy we have to control soil contamination at eighty-nine Farmington Avenue is to. Uh, install an engineer control aligner that that will then be capped to um of, you know, to prevent. Exposure to contaminated soil, and um, you know, we're at the point where we're coordinating with Newport. Because they've gotta do some liner improvements, but uh we're almost there, and so we're getting ready to prepare the bid documents. And we wanted to uh get the okay to count from the council to take the next step.
Where there was a property, we shouldn't have foreclosed on. Uh, we're here, so. Okay, so I mean, uh, yeah, that makes sense, we've been dealing with this for quite a while, and you can see it through to. Conclusion, contamination, any questions for Jim on this one? Sorry, Jack, there's a blank blank history here with this property, I figured, yeah, go back to two thousand eight. Yes, we're working to get it uh under control, I think we're.
The good news is that that we have state grants to do the work.
That's very good news, yes, that's always been the good news in the whole project that we run, paying out of our own taxpayer. But, uh, okay, so if there's some questions, go ahead and take a motion.
And we'll take such favorable recommendation of the. Hey, we accept favorable recommendation of the planning and zoning commission during each. Each twenty four review. For the general, I think, general statutes for a project, instructing engineer control installation on eight eighty nine Farmington Avenue. Or in the new priority improvements. All as generally, generally shown in the engineer control plan prepared by Oriero Engineering. Staff proceed to prepare bid documents for the project.
Second on that, any other comments or questions? Do we not hold in favor?
Aye. Close, motion carried.
The night of number fourteen. I'd like to accept any twenty four review for the building sidewalk improvements.
The uh, we've gotten two grants from the state. One is a connectivity grant, the other is a Steve grant. To extend our sidewalk networks, as you know, over the last period of years, we've been trying to. Connect various sidewalks in town to provide. The opportunity to particularly, you know, walk into the town center, T O D area, all, all, out to the neighborhoods and the open space areas. So there's five elements involved in this project with improvements on. Four Rod Road, Farmington Avenue, Norton Road, Langdon Court, Newton Street. And um, again, we're getting, we're at the point where we're ready to. Put together the bid documents, so we wanted the uh, the authorization to go ahead and proceed on this project.
Thank you. Walk safely around, it's dangerous on the roads these days without sidewalk. Any questions for Jim? Jim, you were saying that we had planned to try and reach. Many places we can't get from downtown to open space. This project, is that going to get us so much closer? Is that going to get us to the uh? The overall plan of.
Well, we're doing it in several sections, so like, for example, right now. Uh, there's sidewalks that would connect uh, from um, you know. I guess um, let's say, let's say, let's talk about the high, the schools, for example. So you go from Farmington Avenue to high school, to Willard, to McGee. Norton Road, so there's only one section on Norton Road that, that needs to be done. That gets you into Wine Sap and, and out to Bicentennial Park, or reverse it, you can walk from the neighborhoods in the other direction. So. And obviously, once you get into, uh, once you get to Farmington Avenue, you can. You know, you can go to New Burton Road, Main Street. Et cetera. So these are all, you know, some of the, the, some of the sections are, are longer than others, but we've had these little gaps. We also have bigger gaps like on Farmington Avenue and Four Rod Road, so we're just trying to. To fill it out, to, to interconnect these places.
Jim, any, any other questions? There are none, I'll take a motion.
We would to accept the favorable recommendation of the planning and zoning commission during each twenty four review. For the Connecticut general statutes of the project, construct sidewalks within towns right away. Showing sidewalk projects on Berlin map. Direct staff to proceed, prepare bid documents for the project.
Second on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do we not know in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. The night of number fifteen is a priorly, they should submit a letter of intent to find for Connecticut community challenge grant. That's going, Jim?
The um, community challenge grant is a new state program to revitalize communities. It's uh, you know, we, we gave you a little information on the program in your packet. It's going to be a hundred million dollar funding program um, available to all the towns in the state. And the funds are going to be released in two rounds. The first round applications are going to be due in January, uh, but we need to submit a letter of intent. By the end of this week. So we've been working on ideas for the projects, um, and we think that improvements in the. In the T O D area around the train station, the center of town would be um, probably the best shot we have for grant and to kind of build on the momentum that we already have going on in that area. So the projects, the charge of projects elements that we're envisioning at this point include um. That Newport build additional units at um, their project at, at Newport Center. They have. They think the room to build another ten units there. Uh, that we have a parcel on the boulevard that is undeveloped, it's about a third of an acre and a little less than that, and um. We think it'd be a good place for a park that would, would uh. Accommodate activities because we have parking there both along the boulevard and the train station parking lot that could be used on night. Nights and weekends, and also to. Make connections to uh, old breakyard lane, which we tried to do with the Conrail spur, but we couldn't, but now we, we think we have a way to do it. Um, via private properties and we've talked to private property owners in between and we think we can work out. Arrangements there and also to connect it to open space behind the Kensington Firehouse and uh, and Newport Center. Uh, we got a little swale to get over and, and there's, there's a trail system that the fire, the fire department's already started to develop back there that we would improve. So. Those are some of the elements that we think can be part of this. Uh, it, the, the grant does require a fifty percent match. So it's in, in, important that um. That Newport, you know, be involved in, in their private investment, you know, we can use as a match. We also have some. Funds left in the Farmington Avenue um, development non-grant account that we use for match for the boulevard. So we would anticipate using those as part of the match for this project. So. Um, that's where we're at at this point and uh, we'll report back to you in January, but for now, we just want to get the authorization to submit the letter of intent.
Any questions for Jim? Not, I think I'm motion.
Okay, we'll talk to write staff to submit a letter of intent. Apply for. Meeting child grant, projects in the vicinity of the Berlin train station. Object to the condition. Staff report back to the town council during the project scope. Match as its general report. Two thousand twenty two.
Second on that. Thank you. Any other, any questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye, aye. Close.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. The night of number sixteen is a creation of the advisory committee for the portable housing plan. So I, I think a couple of meetings four a month ago, we, we shared with the council, the. Connecticut general statute, eight dash thirty J. And there was a guidebook each minute about the. They're required to submit the portable housing plan by June first, twenty twenty two. That's six, six months from today. And then at least once every five years thereafter. Uh, in that guidebook, one of the things they recommended uh, is that the town create an affordable housing committee. Interesting, diverse group. So Jim, I worry myself, uh. Jennifer, we had some names that we sent to the mayor, then to councilor. Runaga, and they were able to, you know, select. And agree on several names that we thought would be good to serve on this committee. Uh, I would like to know there were more people who were interested and I think who can add value. And I think we can give their input, um. Now, they don't have to be on the committee, but we can certainly invite them whenever we need. To uh, gather their input and make this a comprehensive plan. Jennifer, do you want to add anything at this point?
So, good evening, everybody. How are you tonight? Uh, I. I guess the only thing I do want to add is uh, just to emphasize again, you know, and, and we did talk about this a couple of months ago. Um, but the adoption of the plan itself um, will be done by the council. Um, and so, you know, you'll notice in uh, your resolution on this item. Um, that I have included uh, in the language that there will be reports made to the council regarding the progress of the committee. Um, you, you know, so we will endeavor to share with you um, the information um, that is received by the committee. Uh, because obviously, we're going to go through a process of, of, you know, data gathering um, and analyzing. Uh, and we will, you, you know, share with you that information as well as the drafts of the plan as it goes along. So that way, when it comes time. For you to hold your public hearing on this item, you're familiar with the content of the draft plan. So. Um, that is in, again, your resolution on this item, and I think it's an important part um, of the process that we're going to observe. Thanks so much.
Alright, thanks. Um, I just want to, you know, thanks to the seven people that agreed to be on it. Um, we do have some work put out for them. Of course, we have Jennifer helping out. And uh, we have a consultant that will help them as well, and then of course, they will be taken, as you, as you mentioned, Roche. Now, we're going to take, uh, I'm sure we'll have at least one public meeting. I mean, all, all their meetings are public, but I'm sure we'll have one for the community to come forward and. Give us their comments on, on this as well. So certainly it'd be a. Oh, community project, right, that we have to send out, I think, questionnaire, right, to every, everyone in the community to get, get their input. So everyone will have a chance to comment. Great. People, uh, seven people are going to, you know, work on that. Consultant and Jennifer and without, without the information to gather. Any other, any questions for Jennifer?
Jennifer, how often are you going to meet as a group, as an advisory committee?
So, um, you, you know, that, that's going to be determined by the committee. I'm hoping to put together, you know, an immediate email is going to go out to them. Um, hopefully to put together a meeting next week, um, and they'll, and, and we'll make some decisions about. Meetings, the frequency of meetings, depending on whether or not they'd like to break up their meetings and have a couple of shorter meetings per month. Um, or just have one long meeting. I, I think, uh, given. The limited amount of time that we do have, we probably will meet bi-monthly, but you know, that depends on, on how, how quickly they get through the work of the committee. So. Um, and. And what process they'd like to observe. So the first order of business, though, will be, um, you know, sort of those organizational decisions and then also. I am in the process of uh, finalizing with your consultant and with, with Jim and, and Maureen as well. You know, Maureen is, is there as well tonight. Um. Finalizing the actual survey um, to go out. So you're going to see that moving pretty quickly. Um, and then we're also intending to do uh, an, an public informational meeting in December to start. The conversation about what, you know, affordable housing is and isn't, and what the content of the plan will look like. And sharing again, some, some of the information that we have about the town that's pertinent. So, um, you know, those are the first steps that we have planned.
And thank you.
Yep.
That, that's great, because, you know, I know we talked about this a little bit uh, in our discussions, the four of us that. You know, everybody in the committee start with the same. Information, you know, I, I think the biggest. Uh, definition that, or misconception that's out there is the affordable housing, what that really means, right? People just don't. You know, they have many different definitions uh, that people think it is, so. I know we're going to educate the members of the. Committee first and then go, go, go to the public next, which is great. Any other question? No, I think the one thing that we did say for sure, and uh, Jen had brought this up as well, is the need for people in the community to voice their. Their concerns, their issues, their thoughts on this whole thing, because the more thoughts and the more diverse thinking we have. As far as with affordable housing in Berlin, the better it is to give the best recommendations. I, I urge people. To uh, to listen to when the meetings are, it means they can't follow it on Zoom, um, and then also the question that actually to let out. As many voices, yeah, you heard right, everybody for Berlin. Yeah, and, you know, it is important too, that I, I don't think they've, I don't think this, right, uh, legislation has moved the bar, right? They haven't changed the ten percent. Yeah, right, that's still in, in the statute.
No, they have not changed the threshold.
Right, and, and Berlin has been very proactive in that fact, that one of the most proactive towns in the state, trying to reach that ten percent where, you know. And some projects that are coming online will be added. Yeah, this is over, this is over, yeah, so. You know, whether, whether the bar gets moved or not, we'll find out, but at least we, we have been. Very much so. You know, over the course of our, our history, many, many years. Pay attention to this and tried to bring affordable housing and have brought affordable housing to Berlin, so. You know, at least somewhere down the road, we really have embraced this and tried to. You know, help people. Affordable housing for all. Any other questions? Now, go ahead and. Take a motion.
Okay, we move to establish and appoint the seven member advisory committee consisting of the following individuals. Amy Belko, Christopher Capola, Robert Dembrowski, Amy Gamble, verge Miller, Tracy Shipman, and Tracy Sisti. Known as the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee. The purposes of working with town staff, consultants, provides on and engage the public in the process of preparing. The draft Affordable Housing Plan, the town of Berlin, in compliance with Connecticut general statute, eight thirty J. Which draft plan will be presented to the town council honor before May first, two thousand twenty two, for its review and approval. Many amendments that deemed necessary, committee shall meet as required, bill its purpose. Shall issue monthly stats reports to the town council to update the council on the work of the committee. And this first meeting, the committee shall select the chair, vice chair, and a secretary of the committee. Our employees will attend the meetings, the committee as available, offer their input. For the work of the committee based on their specialized knowledge. Who will not be wing members of the committee.
Thank you. Second on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Aye, aye. The most.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Hope your son feels better.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Wow, the last one. The number seventeen.
Last, but it's not over yet.
So, um. This agenda item, the, the hiring of the new police chief, the offer was made. To hire the new, um, to the new. Police chief, start on November first, twenty twenty one. And uh, due to a delay in processing certain required paperwork by various agency groups. And the chief could not be sworn in until November fourth, twenty twenty one noon. And then the deputy chief continued during that time to serve as acting chief. Um, the current budget does not allow. Pay two chiefs at the same time, and hence we need an appropriation from the council and then it will finance to cover the. Impression that account, and that's what.
Okay, um, any questions, Roche? Are we none? Go ahead, take a motion.
Okay, move to transfer two thousand dollars from the professional personnel to department head. Often the police department general fund budget, pay the new police chief of the period of November first, thousand twenty one, to November fourth, two thousand twenty one.
Hey, any other comments or questions? Not, all in favor? Mary. Okay, so. Um. We got. How urgent is it if we uh, do this uh? Subcommittee, is it important? Can we wait till December meeting, along with any appointments? And then. Then we have an executive session, we still got to get through. And uh. Go to the town managers report, I know it will be very brief and succinct to what we need to know.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know you will, I can tell you, well.
Alright, I'll put all this aside, babe. Oh, want to give you like, quick four bullets. Uh, they were important, I think, uh, sort of strategic initiatives that we had discussed as the beginning of the year. Uh, one is we talked about getting some uh. Putting an R P out, we already did for the Timberland golf course. And we got three responses. Uh, at this point, we are developing the fiscal year twenty budget for Timberland. So that we get a sense of what the actual number is going to look. We do the maintenance. And then we'll have an opportunity to compare that to the uh, the R P that, that sponsored that we. And we plan to complete that in the next couple of weeks or so. So that we can compare those samples. Uh, the second one is the, the V and A. In this one, we had talked about uh, getting an outside group and be hired. Again, this one, we had talked about uh, getting an outside group and we hired three. Aside my three, three, uh, to come in, take a look at the V and A and propose some. Recommendations, and they did a very comprehensive report that includes uh, a lot of recommendations for operations and. Efficiency, then how we might be able to move the needle. It's a lot to explore, we just got it last week. Um, in the process of working with um, Barbara, who is the administrator for the V and A, and Kevin. To go through the reports and sort of map out a plan to. Cooperate some of those recommendations and see where we go with it. Uh, remember, going back, last year we closed with a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit in the V and A. Now, my goal is to try and get it down to around seven hundred and then to a five hundred. And then move the needle on the census, uh, if you, if you can. Current census is around fifty, averaging, and.
It's five, fifty now?
Fifty, uh, we've had one, two masses, and so that's been a challenge, we have not been able to.
Right.
And we just offered it for the, us, items, this last week. So um, and, and we do think, um, again, this is just. But I'm fairly optimistic with the current team that we might be able to. That, so, yeah. So more to come on that. And this particular one, the Berlin High School, that work project, that's all. Um, is, is there invisible right now, but we've been working really hard with the group. It looks fabulous, it's, it's unpacked it pretty much, but enough, we have some punchless items. And uh, before the end of this, I would say to be safe, end of the year.
Yeah.
It will be, uh, each.
Allo.
Uh, yeah, and then uh, we have also initiated, you mentioned working with uh, you know, Gilbain, the former. Construction group to pull the paperwork, to actually close out the, send the paperwork to close out the construction project. So that'll be a big uh, when we can get all that done. And uh, finally, I will talk about the Berlin High School uh, LED project that we worked with EverSource. And they're placing a lot of the controls and lighting pictures. Uh, total cost of about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And uh, the incentives of three hundred thirteen we got from EverSource. So the mid-cost to us will be two hundred and nine, and that will be paid, you'll have over a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars in savings. As a result of the LEDs, so less than two years, there will be payback, then after that. Maybe we can use the hundred thousand to do something else. So uh, I'll, I'll, I'll stop there.
Oh.
And uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, special committee reports, um, there are like a couple, what do you got? Oh, yes, you do, you have a.
Simple one here. Also, you know, this is just the calendar.
Oh, yes.
Next year, you know, usually pretty simple, they're pretty much within days of each other from last year. One change I made that. Stay away from the Fourth of July, we. The meeting.
Oh. Yeah.
So. Yes, Buster, we'll get the next time.
All right, that's our, that's our only, right?
The other thing I wanna bring up too is that we do have a meeting for the. Your center, community center this week. Unfortunately, I can't be there, and I don't think that's gonna be a problem, I think there's some good people there to. End of the meeting very well, Thomas should be able to handle it, I'm seeing her tomorrow. Um, we're doing a walkthrough, it rained for community center tomorrow, so go and get that one. I will talk to her about any topics for, any ideas or questions she has for meeting on Thursday. Unfortunately, I have two business owners away, and I have business deal on Thursday night, that I have to be at, because I'm going. I couldn't change the date for that meeting, and that, and initially had thoughts about changing the meeting to Thursday. But we have some guests coming that, we're told about it in advance, and it'd be just a mess. So, and we're gonna have some of our state representatives there and senator. Let's eat here, and uh, get the number of the, the most. Try and see how much hope we can get, and find some wonder, so that will be, you know, part of the biggest topic for this week on that project. So, yeah, once again, I apologize, I can't make it.
Yeah, you're paying, John?
Yeah.
That's not right. She got to say your priority, that's Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I feel bad, but I'm gonna go visit a place tomorrow. The visits have gone pretty good, you know, just sort of little update. It was a very good note for people that have gone to some of them.
Yeah.
Get some ideas.
That's great. Okay, I think that's it, right? Council communications, was anyone, any communications? Welcome, Jeff, to your first meeting. Yes, yes. It's, it's a late one, too, wanted to bring in, right, you know? We get home early. Reality, the more. Yeah, yeah. Especially when I have meetings for a while, you know? Yeah. So it does tend to build up. We try and move it as quickly as we can, but it just. That's why we're here. Anyone else, any communications? I didn't hear anybody else.
I wanna make the fire department for, being out with the letting of the tree.
Oh, yeah.
With the, I mean, just downtown looks really nice. Oh, yeah, I was talking to Chief Pedro just earlier, and he had said that, how he uh. Turned around at one point after putting a lot of things together, and it was remarked one of the people.
Yeah, as opposed to last year, when it was me and uh, videotaping Merry Christmas to Berlin. It was very depressing last year, and the tree got lit and uh, myself and the fireman went home. But uh, yeah, no, it's much, much, much nicer this time. It was a little chilly that night, yes, it was. I, I thought the coolest thing was the Christmas tree, right? And it, oh, Berlin, the lady planted it in nineteen seventy-five, and there, that was, that was a great story. So, all right, so uh, if no one else, we'll go on to our acceptance, we got two, two meetings to accept here. Uh, motion for the October nineteenth, twenty-one.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes from October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, second, right, all in favor? One extension there, Jeff, right? Any opposed? Uh, so move, and then November sixteenth meeting.
Sure. Rush to accept the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second, okay. Move in favor? Okay, so now we will uh, move into our executive session. Go ahead, take a motion for executive session.
Yeah, make a motion to move into executive session for any litigations committed to General State Statute, section one, two hundred six, per being.
Night, ladies. Respect of any claims or pending litigation, so avoid tax appeal. And uh, second, uh, second, well, invited in, inviting in. Manager, preparation counsel, right? Second on that. Give it a minute to.
Kate, you're gonna pause and come back?
Oh, we gotta go back and session, right?
Yeah, so.
Am I staying?
No. You can stay.
Stay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we invited Kate into.
No, I can't stay in the meeting, but I can pause.
Number for the motion is uh.
The October one, two thousand seventeen value will be twenty-three million dollars.
Okay, yeah.
Actually, it's, it's October one, two thousand eighteen, because it's the first year.
All right, so uh, uh, regarding our discussion, the executive session, we're out of that, and we have a second, regular session, we have a motion.
Raise the town manager, preparation council. Report with the proposed settlement of twenty-three million from December first, two thousand eighteen assessment. It's a void property of two twenty-five at this courtroom.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? Are we none, those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Those, all right, motion carries. And motion to adjourn, unless you wanna stay longer. Second? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Oh, so that, yeah.
Yeah, all of you have these calculations. Yesterday, so, you know, don't put ourselves on the shoulder, except for our seniors.
Yeah.
At eighteen twenty-four, we have been in all the other town.
Are we?
Yeah.
What happened?
I don't know. I tell ya, something's going on.